And I realize, you know, it's kind of lower on my.
Uh, Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Tu Hau Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Klaufenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tam Beer.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Kelly, I'd like to ask Kingsville Corica to lead us in the invocation and then the birthday girl, Stephanie Klaufenstein, to do the pledge of allegiance.
All right, have a live father, provider of strength. We pray that as leaders of our community, we might have the insight and courage to serve the citizens with wisdom and truth. We ask for your guidance in making decisions tonight that affect our community and ensuring that all decisions that we make are in the best interest of our city and all of its citizens. Amen.
Please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will go on to presentations. We're actually skipping 1A. We're going to continue that for another meeting. So 1B.
Item 1B is the upcoming July 4th public safety update, and it will be presented by the fire chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Tom Schultz, your fire chief, and it's a pleasure to give you an update as to what the public safety and the city is preparing for the Fourth of July. So as you know, Fourth of July is rapidly approaching. Our city has a long history of celebrating the Fourth of July, and we want to make sure that the city continues to do it in a safe way. So the following steps, proactive steps, we've taken over the last several weeks and actually months to prepare for the Fourth of July. For starters, our arson team has been working, surveying different media and stuff, searching for illegal fireworks sales to be proactive and kind of try to cut off the sale of the fireworks for the illegal fireworks before it happens. We are actively working with the, um, the building department to make sure that our fireworks stands, once they get stood up, are properly inspected and safe. Right now, we have 39 stands that are have been approved, and we have a maximum count of 45 that could be approved. Block parties, we've been working with the community relations division. As you know, we recently just raised that permit cost for, uh, for the block parties. And what we plan on doing on the actual Fourth of July is that we'll have a police officer, as well as one of our fire prevention staff, inspecting each one of the block parties with the intent of education. We're not going to try to shut anybody down on that, but just make sure that we have proper access and that everything's safe. As well as if we run across a, an imprompt block party, we can make sure we mitigate that as well. Our arson team will be, uh, working with the police department on the Fourth of July, patrolling the neighborhoods and making sure that they can intercept illegal fireworks wherever possible. Uh, both police and fire will be providing supplemental staffing on the Fourth of July, what we kind of think of as a little more impact staffing to knock down fires quick and also get compliance. The fire department will also be prepared to stand up their emergency operations center. If something does break in the city, we'll be able to rapidly respond to that. And then lastly, ongoing, we've been working with the community. We've been, uh, receiving some inquiries and some complaints about Fourth of July activities in the past, and we've been trying to educate the public and provide information quickly and clearly as to what the city's doing, what's legal and what's not legal within the city. Uh, if anybody does have a question related to fire fireworks and what can be done and not, I urge them to contact, um, the fire department directly through the business phone number, 714-741-5600. Or you can also contact the fire department through social media. And again, the goal is to make sure that everybody has a great, safe Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And Chief, let me, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, let me just chime in a couple additional things. So in addition to all of that, we'll, we're also going to, the chief will be back here, uh, in a couple of weeks, uh, giving a similar update. If there's any changes or any new things that are happening, obviously you all are up to speed on what's going on, but the main point is to, through our council meetings, to get the word out to the public. You've seen some of the banners going up across some of our thoroughfares around the city, reminding people about the $1,000 citations if you're so arrested. And, um, so we take that seriously. And, uh, the, both of our chiefs will be, and their staff will be out and about during the Fourth. So we'll be back in two weeks to give you another update as we get closer to the Fourth of July.
Yeah, thanks for that additional information. And also, I forgot to mention that we're starting our social media blitz. A lot of information going out to the public regarding safe and sane fireworks and things to do and not to do. And I'll be back next council meeting and after the Fourth of July, giving you an after action report as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go on to oral communications. I do have a number of cards. We'll start with Mitch Attia. Forgive me if I said that wrong.
Folks, I'm here on behalf of, uh, of the fastest growing sport in America that you might not have heard of, and it's called pickleball. So what is pickleball, you may ask? It's, it's a, it's like ping pong, tennis and badminton combined. And the reason why it's the fastest growing sport is because it's a lot of fun. And honestly, the demographics are, we're getting older, so it's a sport that a lot of people can play and not hurt themselves, or, or if they're a little bit older, um, they can get some exercise and not, uh, be too, uh, too tired. So there is a grand opening here, um, happening Wednesday, June 20th at, uh, MAP. I guess that's what we call it, MAP, the, um, it's at 1252, 12552 Western Avenue. And it's, it's, it's free. There's going to be refreshments, a drawing. The pickleball ambassador is going to give away some, uh, some fabulous prizes. And all levels of play, beginners to advanced people will be there. There'll be some demonstrations on how to play the game. And, um, it'll be a lot of fun, as well as, uh, introductory lessons for people who might want to, you know, figure out the game. Um, probably don't want to come in your business suits and, uh, hope to see a lot of folks there. Okay? Any questions? Oh, sorry, that's 9:30 in the morning. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Tony Flores.
Good evening, and I'm Tony Flores. Uh, just a couple of comments here. Um, because of this survey that's going around right now, asking Garden Grove to pick our priorities. Let's talk about that. I sent an email earlier. Some of you may or may not have seen it, but here's our illustrious mayor dining at this really expensive restaurant with somebody who's coming in, uh, to build the steel craft. Um, big, big dollars being spent here. This is a restaurant, I called today, actually, 138 bucks for a steak. I wonder who paid for that? Hmm. We're going to stand on the economic statements, I hope. But, uh, while our mayor and city staff are eating very, very high in the hog, we've got a flyer that's out, that's asking us to pick which services we can do without. Which services we can do without? One through seven, you know, what's, what's the one that you can probably do without? That's what this amounts to. Well, you folks have spent our money and just basically washed it away. You're telling us now that this, um, sales tax increase is going to help us out. Some of you may or may not remember, in fact, some of you weren't even around, but when we created the hotel visitors tax, we were told we were going to put more police officers on the street. Then we raised it twice. Told we were going to put more police officers on the street. Not one has been added. Not one. In fact, I think we're in the negative. Um, trying to, instead of trying to scare folks into going for this, this nonsense, do some homework, get together, and do what you're elected to do. Uh, this is on, right? Okay. Do it, what you're elected to do. Get it done. Um, back from last week's, or the last council meeting when Ms. Nguyen ran off the dais there. Let me read a quote there that you said at the end of the meeting. And I hope, I hope I don't laugh at this one, but let me see if I can get it out. Equality feels like oppression when you're accustomed to privilege. I don't know what the hell that means, but, but let's talk about your privilege. You're the one that put together these districts. Remember, you walked off because you're talking about, somebody who, who was talking about SB 54 and the, uh, the illegal immigrants here that are on our state of California that are running into the ground. You also mentioned that you were, your real name, according to what you said on the video, it's Nguyen-Ramos, but yet you dropped it. Now, this is on the website still, Garden Grove. This is what you put together, Ms. Nguyen. And you talk about Spanish surname, Asian surname, Vietnamese surname, Asian surname, Vietnamese surname, turnout, even the turnout. And we see that the Hispanic slash Latino is kind of low, which is probably why you dropped your Ramos. But in District 6, it's clear that you were shooting for that, that particular vote. This is based on race, not, not ability, not merit, not experience, based on race. So you slipped into a pretty good district to guarantee your, your seat there. And again, not because you have the experience, we know what you're doing, but based on race. So let's get away from that, that race thing. And let's talk about just being Americans from now on. And that's how you should base your decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the staff. Two days from now, June 14th is Flag Day. I hope all of you have your flags ready to put out, show your pride in our great country. But I would hope that you would put them out every day. Now, I built my own flagpole. It's a 20-foot flagpole. I've got an eagle on the top of it. It's attached to my house. I did that so that I can, on the occasion it's necessary, lower my flag to half staff. Now, Flag Day is June 14th, but June 14th has another special significance. June 14th was when the United States Army was first established in 1775. I wonder how many of you have visited the Central Courthouse in Santa Ana, probably for jury duty. But if you're walking down the hallway on the third floor, you may or may not have noticed, on the wall, there are a lot of copies of important documents in our history. Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights. When I take students through tours of the Central Courthouse, I always stop and point these out to them, but also mention someplace that a lot of them are not aware of. Right across the street from Knott's Berry Farm is something called Independence Hall. It is an exact duplicate of the building in Philadelphia where delegates met to form our government. It's well worth a trip across the street to visit it. And all of those documents, the copies of those documents are available for sale. You can get your own copy of the Declaration of Independence to mount on the wall in your bedroom. Going further down that third level hallway, you pass through two sets of glass doors to get into the jury assembly room. Always take them down there, show them what it's all about, and explain what jury duty is supposed to be. On the way back, we go through the first set of glass doors, past the cafeteria. Before we get to the second set of glass doors, I stop them, and I point out something that's on the wall. It is a copy of the original flag our country flew in the American Revolution, 13 stars and stripes. I wonder how many of you have walked down that hallway and never noticed it. When we go through that second set of glass doors, I stop them again. I point out another flag on the wall. This flag has 15 stars and 15 stripes. It's a flag we flew during our war against England in 1812. I tell them the story of how Fort McHenry defended the port of Baltimore. The British fleet sailed in to subdue the fort. There was a young lawyer who rode out to the British ships to try to secure the release of two men. He was successful, but the captain of the ship said, "I'm sorry, you can't leave yet. We're about to start the bombardment. You'll have to wait." So he and the other men stood at the rail of that British ship and watched the bombardment. It lasted all day and into a very dark night. And the only way that they could tell that the fort had not surrendered was because the flag was still flying. The flag was shot down many times. It was put back up. Towards the end, the only thing they had available to steady the staff of the flag was the bodies of the dead soldiers who defended it. The next morning, a heavy fog rolled in. They couldn't see anything. When the fog lifted, they saw that the flag was still flying, and they gave up on the bombardment and released the three men. That lawyer wrote a poem while he was watching us. That poem later became known as the Star-Spangled Banner. When I talk to these young people, I tell them, "The next time you hear our national anthem, you think about those brave men who defended Fort McHenry." Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Kay Purcell.
Good evening. I was here a year and a half ago complaining about 11512 Chapman. They're storing commercial equipment in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I, I gave you a sample. I could have given you 100 pictures, but I just gave you a sample of what's going on. They're also storing gasoline in the back in big gasoline cans. And they're starting up all their diesel equipment at 5:30 in the morning, waking up all the neighbors when they leave. And the neighbor right next to them says that the diesel fumes are so bad that he cannot leave his house for at least a half hour until the air clears. This has been going on now for three years. A year and a half ago, I came to complain about it, and now it's a year and a half later. What they're doing is against our municipal code. They're only renters. They don't even own the property. And I'd like to know, what are we paying code enforcement for? They make a pretty decent salary. I used to call Ralph Hernandez every day and tell him what was parked there. Every time they came home, I would call him and say, "Okay, the semi's there. The big box truck is there. The backhoe is there on the trailer." Not one thing has been done. So what I'd like to know also is, right next to me, they have planted their entire front yard in corn. I have rats that run across my patio every night crawling up the screen door trying to get in. The neighbor on the other side of these people, who also are renters, the corn people are renters, the neighbor has a childcare, a licensed childcare business, and he's overrun with rats. There just has to be something that they can do about that. I realize that people may not want to water their lawns, but they at least should make everything in the front, at least it should be short, and it should look halfway decent. We should not be able to grow eight-foot-tall corn stalks in our front yard. We're starting to look like Mexico. People are cementing their whole front yards and turning it into a parking lot. Also, I'd like to ask you, I bought a dog for the police department a year and a half ago, Vedar, and I thank you so much for finally having them get the dog. But what I would like to know is, do you think I could at least have a picture of him? I have a picture of my father on the wall. I bought the dog in memory of him. I also bought one for Placentia. They gave me a nice plaque with the dog and the handler on it, and I put it on the side by my father's picture. The other side is empty because I don't have anything. I don't even have a snapshot. I think that's a terrible way. I think that's a terrible way to treat somebody who tried to do something good for the police department. I think everybody should be ashamed. That's all. Thank you.
Cesar Mata.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Cesar Mata, and this is my wife, Raquel Mata. My family and I have owned our home in Garden Grove and lived in Garden Grove for over 21 years in District 5. It is with exasperation and deep frustration that I am here to address the unacceptable and disappointing of this city's code enforcement division. I'd like to read for you straight from the city's code enforcement website. "The City of Garden Grove is committed to working with citizens in a joint effort to preserve and improve all of our residential neighborhoods. We share your desire to maintain the quality of life throughout your neighborhood. To ensure a tranquil neighborhood, community standards for residential areas have been established to determine the proper maintenance of residential properties and neighborhoods. Community standards are reflected in the Garden Grove residential codes. Maintaining and enhancing our neighborhoods is also important because it protects the property value of your home. Our staff and code enforcement officers work to investigate complaints of property maintenance violations. If a violation is noted, our officers work with the property owners and tenants to correct any violations and bring property into compliance with city codes. For two years, my family and my neighbors' quality of life has suffered because of the code enforcement's division failure to fulfill its mission. What you have before you are pictures taken as of Sunday, June 10th, 2018, of the property located at 11081 Sherman Avenue. This is our neighbor. For the past two years, I've been told that the process takes time. Let me ask each one of you, how long would you live with these conditions next to your home or in your neighborhood before you demanded action from your city leaders? This is a quality of life issue. This is a property value issue. This is a safety issue, and this is a fire hazard issue. The Garden Grove Police Department has responded to this address for illegal parking, animal cruelty, disturbing the peace, and we appreciate their efforts, but we know this isn't their area of responsibility. All of these issues exist because the code enforcement division has failed to do their job. Code enforcement division is completely and fully aware of these hazards and illegal conditions and have allowed them progress to this point. We hold very high standards for our home and keep our home in excellent condition. We do not expect others to have the same level of standards that we have, but at the very least, they should be required to comply with the city laws that were created to ensure a good quality of life for our entire community. And at the very least, we expect our city's enforcement departments to work with us in this effort. All of these issues are legally responsible to the City of Garden Grove, and we will hold the city responsible in the event our home, our family, or our community is injured in any manner because of the city's failure to act." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Chuck Boyd.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. I'm also here about the matter on 11081 Sherman. And I have a few items to talk about, but after seeing the pictures and the like, I know what it's like to follow the Beatles. I'm Ed Sullivan. My point is that our property is really, in Districts 4, 5, and 6, we're literally a quarter of a mile, as the crows fly, and our, and the property is 100, about 100 yards from the Euclid boundary of your district, Mr. Bowie, and we're about a quarter mile, about a quarter mile west of your district as well, Miss Wynn. And, I mean, it's gotten to the point, I mean, it's really gotten bad the last five or six months, but there's a time where I thought that all of a sudden, all this stuff appeared on this, on, I'm not going to call it sidewalk, we have no sidewalks in the street, but we have fences, and there's grass on the other side of the fence that we take care of. And I had thought, oh, great, he's getting, finally getting rid of all this stuff in his yard. But I found out that he was just taking new delivery of other items. And it's really gotten, I mean, gotten to be really bad out there. I mean, I've seen, I've seen Rita, you know, take pictures and the like, so I know that you guys are out there, and I'm pretty sure that code enforcement knows what we're talking about. But if, I'm not sure, did you just get the satellite photo of that? I mean, if you look on the particular property, if you look at all the items that are white and black, that's all trash. That's all rubbish and whatever. The thing about this particular property is that if you make a right, you know, where the animal hospital is down the street, if you make a right and go into Sherman, it literally is at the fork of the road, so it enters, I mean, the first thing a lot of people see when they enter Sherman and Crosby is that property. And it really, you know, it's, it's not like it's in the middle of the street and so, I'm not saying that that's good, but it really says hello to people coming there. And I know that the house that's right, maybe 25 yards across the street from them, they've had their property up for sale a couple of times, and they haven't been able to sell it. They've had to, you know, unfortunately, had to rent, and I know that Bob across the street is looking into selling his property, and who in the heck wants to buy a piece of property with them looking at that? So, you know, just from aesthetic point of view, and I have to, I mean, I've gotten to the point where I, people that want to come visit me, I have them, purposefully make them turn on Paloma and go around so they don't have to see that. So, you know, and I appreciate Cesar being so exasperated, and that was his term. You know, I live like three or four, I live across the street, but three or four houses down. You know, I'm in the balcony. This gentleman here is in the front row. And, you know, his daughter, I mean, a lot of those pictures that you see are what his daughter has to look at when she gets up in the morning. She hears the gentleman night working around. She hears the cats fighting and crowing. There's vermin in there, and there's stray cats and whatever, and, you know, and, you know, especially now, you know, the chief's talking about, or talking about fireworks. I mean, heck, we have a whole bunch of illegal fireworks on the fourth. Imagine what happens if one of those bottle rockets were to fall in there. So I, so I'm just here to give my support to Cesar, and I'm tired of looking at it myself, and I just hope that we can come to a speedier resolution to the issue, because I know there's, you know, some problems in there. But anyway, I thank you for your time, and take care.
Thank you, sir. Claire Bischoff.
Good evening. I'm a science teacher here in Garden Grove for the past 20 years, and I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the amount of plastic trash going down our open storm drains. Our storm drains are like wide-open mouths that the plastic can go right down into. I have been a volunteer down at Bolsachica, and when we go out there in our kayaks and try to clean up the plastic, it's overwhelming. Even a flotilla of kayaks could not get the plastic. And I understand that our storm drains lead down to Bolsachica. So, once I became aware of it from the kayaking, then I started watching as I drive around Garden Grove. And when I come to a storm drain that has something at the mouth of it that's just about ready to slip down into the storm drain, I've actually been stopping my car and picking it up. And I want to show you just a few samples of what I have found in just the last few For instance, this monofilament wire here, the, probably from somebody's fishing line. The plastic cups in the street, it's just a matter of time before they collapse, and then they go right down the storm drain. I pulled this out of the entrance to a storm drain. These ubiquitous green straws, which we all recognize, they don't get recycled, they're get, a lot of teenagers will throw them in the street, and they start to disintegrate. And I don't know how much everybody knows about what's going on with the ocean, but you've probably heard about the whales even being dissected with the plastic in their guts. Well, the reason I'm here is to ask the city to put the grating back on the storm drains. And I went to our Central Garden Grove Neighborhood Meeting, and I was told the reason we don't have the gratings is because of our topography. Well, over in Westminster, they have about the same topography that we do, and they've got gratings on their storm drains. And I'd like to make the suggestion that we redesign them so that if they do need to be removed, if we ever did get some heavy rain, if they did need to be removed, they could be easily removed, but 10 months out of the year, we could be protecting the ocean from the plastic trash in Garden Grove. So I think we need to get the gratings back on the storm drain entrances. I do not think that we should wait for the State Water Quality Control Board to tell us that we need to do this. I think, I think, like, I really listened when you said that prayer at the beginning of the meeting, because it's not just like we want to do what's good for Garden Grove, but that Garden Grove does not do harm to the ocean. The trash that's going from Garden Grove into the Pacific, it just doesn't stay off the coast of California. We've got really one ocean because of all the currents. And I guess I could have put this up. I didn't have to lean over. But anyways, every day, there is a lot of plastic trash in the streets in Garden Grove, and a lot of it's going down those storm drains that are wide open. I think we should follow the lead of other cities and put the gratings back on there. And if it's too much to put the gratings back on all the storm drains, there are some key locations, like on the corner of Chapman and Euclid, by that Starbucks there. I always see something going down the storm drain there. Also, over at Brookhurst and Stanford. I mean, I could give you a short list of 20 of them that are quite bad, but that's what I would like to ask, that we think about putting the gratings back on the storm drains, at least for 10 months out of the year, and at least at the hotspots. Thank you.
Thank you. Leland Sisk.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, I have some binders to pass out, and then we'll get into this. So I was told I could distribute these.
Thank you, sir.
These are yours to keep. You don't have to hand them back. And one for me. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to go over this with you a little bit. I couldn't find what I wanted in the city code, so I wrote my own. I wrote an entire city code for the City of Garden Grove, and the title is, "A Proposal to amend the general code of the City of Garden Grove specifically. I want to write a code, well, I did write a code, that has to do with storage of recreational vehicles on private property. I know the city has a code that deals with parking in the street. This deals with parking in residential neighborhoods." So now, if you look at the tabs, one is the introduction. That's nice. You can read that. That talks about our city's general plan. You go to Section 2, gets into a discussion that lists some current city codes. What I was curious about is, how many single-family residences we have, do we have in the City of Garden Grove? Because if you have a yard and a driveway, you could store an RV, all right? I delineated the definition of what constitutes an RV. So to arrive at how many possible single-family residences we have, I submitted a request to the city, and it comes back out that the latest data that we have is from 2007. That may not coincide with their standard metropolitan statistical area numbers, but that's all I had, so that's what I had to use. So we have 47,197 housing units in the City of Garden Grove. 66% of them are single-family, 30% were multifamily units, and 4%, you do the math, 66% of 47,197 says that there are 31,150 single-family residences, every one of a possible storage area. So what do I do? How do you, how do you maybe take account, driving down the street with the camera, taking pictures, or probably not win you a lot of friends? So I did what everybody else has done, and I consulted Google Earth, and they say, "That's perfectly fine. You can do that." So if you look at Google Earth, what I did is I took that city map, and I took two random streets in each district. I printed it, I counted the RVs, and I counted the homes, and if you look at the methodology and data, I come up with a percentage for each district of the city in Garden Grove. Now, I'm not a seven, I'm not a statistician, but the seven years I spent in high school were not wasted. You come up with an overall percentage for the City of Garden Grove, it's 0.587%. Divide that into the number of houses, and it gives you a number of a potential 1,828 RVs stored in the City of Garden Grove on a front yard or a driveway. Do the math, it's there. It's in the pictures. Didn't fake them. My numbers, my math is on the back of the picture, and you have a picture of each district. They figure, and figure out what the streets are. Go have a look. Okay, so let's go over here to what I say are the conflicts with the current city ordinance. Now, this woman here complained about commercial vehicles stored in her neighborhood. Well, guess what? I've got that right here. It says, Garden Grove Municipal Code 1056.110, says, "Streets listed are designed for passenger vehicles deteriorate rapidly under the weight of heavy trucks. Also, the noise, diesel fumes, and negative visual impact created by oversized vehicles can affect the tranquility of a neighborhood." And continuously says, "Oversized vehicles defined for the purposes of this section as any commercially registered vehicle rated over 1 ton." So if a 1-ton commercial vehicle can wreck a neighborhood, how about a 28-foot, or a 32-foot, or 40-foot motorhome parked parallel to the street in a residential neighborhood that has never moved? Stays there day after day, year after year. Or someone who gets permission from the City of Garden Grove to put gravel down the side of their house, park a travel trailer on the house, and that homeowner told me that that thing will never move, they're using it as an addition to their house. It's got chocks in front of the wheels, it's got electricity and water going through it, and it ain't never moving. They told me that themselves. Let's look at another conflict, and this one really bothers me. Municipal Code 9.08.040.100, Walls, Fences, and Hedges and Yards, Paragraph B states in no uncertain terms the following, "Yard regulations, except as provided elsewhere in Title 9, every required yard shall be open and unobstructed from the ground to the sky." Well, if you look at that page, following that section, that's my view of the sky. A 32-foot motorhome backed into the driveway, three inches or six inches from my fence. I don't see how that's allowed. So if I call code enforcement and say, "Look, I want to put a storage shed in my front yard, three feet from the fence," no, it's got to be five feet. And you can't put a storage shed in your front yard anyway. All right? So now let's go on over here to propose changes in solution. That's where I wrote the law. Did you know that there's no regulation that says that someone that has a motorhome stored in their front yard or in the driveway can't dump the sewage in the street? Or if they've got a connection into their line, they can just dump their sewage right there? We don't have anything that says that they can't do it. All right? So back in the attachments section, I have examples from other municipalities. As a matter of fact, the City of Cypress has this exact same ordinance. Can't park your motorhome, I'm talking about storing it. I did make an allowance here for parking twice a month for 72 hours. If you're going to go somewhere, bring it, pack it, leave. All right? But I want to leave you with two thoughts here. One, where it talks about the degrading property values, the commercial vehicles. I have two citations in here from real estate organizations that say that when there are RVs parked and stored organizations that say that when there are RVs parked and stored in driveways, or stored in front yards, prospective buyers just drive around them down the street. And as you've heard me say, if I wanted to live in a mobile home park, I'd have bought a mobile home. But I don't. I bought a house. All right? So let me leave you with one thought. Let's go back to that data. That's kind of mind-bending. Remember I told you that out of all the houses in Garden Grove, 4% of them were mobile homes? Do the math. That comes out to 1,887.88 mobile homes in Garden Grove. So let's use 1888. Remember how many RVs I said were stored in the city? 1878. So we have almost as many mobile homes in the city of Garden Grove as we do RVs stored on front yards. Thank you.
Dale Softner.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Let me get my papers out. It's that time of year again. I bring forth the issue of fireworks in the city of Garden Grove on the Fourth. First, let me read you from a post from the Orange County Fire Chiefs Association that Garden Grove Chief Schultz is president of. "Even with aggressive public education enforcement efforts, the public as well as public safety agencies continue to be adversely impacted by the use of safe and sane and illegal fireworks. Based on the data we have collected and evaluated, our surveys show little or no decline in property losses and personal injuries over several years. Instead, the use of illegal fireworks continues to climb when combined with the damages and injuries resulting from the use of safe and sane fireworks has created a situation where damages exceed any other holiday period. These consequences stretch public safety resources and adversely impact the ability to meet emergency demands for service in a timely manner." Unquote. Now, I realize that this is a polarizing issue. It pits neighbors against neighbors, some associations, neighborhood groups against the youth-oriented nonprofit groups. So escalating that this issue contributed to murder over in West Garden Grove over the arguing on fireworks. Many residents complain that their neighborhoods are turned into war zones. They could become hostages in their own homes during this period. Also, the issue of the struggle of veterans and those with PTSD cannot be emphasized enough. It has been shown that safe and sane fireworks contribute to a significant increase in illegal fireworks. Close proximity to Mexico, I know, prevents cities from completely stopping the flow of illegal fireworks. However, only 10 of 34 cities allow the sale of fireworks in Orange County. Maybe those 24 cities have nonprofit groups that find other fundraising efforts to subsidize their needs. Those cities help them. Maybe Garden Grove could help them. And also, do we really need 45 permits to sell fireworks, have fireworks boothed in the cities? As you'll see tonight, one of the issues is that's on the agenda. Some group outside of Garden Grove that, from a city that doesn't allow the sale of fireworks, is trying to get a permit within the city. The city does have ordinance about fireworks. It prohibits the detonation of legal fireworks on public streets, sidewalks, parks, school grounds. Try driving down your street on the Fourth of July. When has this ever been enforced? Parks and school grounds have been prime locations for illegal activity forever. Another issue is the enormous amount of block parties that are allowed. Streets are blocked off. They hinder public safety efforts to enforce the laws and to get help in an emergency. My next issue is cost. As many of you know, the city has a huge structural budget deficit. It's only getting bigger. And as we've heard over and over the past months, on many occasions, the city's financial needs are serious and the city is going to cut costs by 5% reduction in all departments. We've heard the need for more police and fire. You know, every year, we hear that both the police and the fire chiefs say that hands, all hands are on deck. It's, everybody's working on the Fourth. I ask, how much is this overtime costing us? How much is it costing in all these safety issues? Also, there's an increase to the Public Works Department. How many man-hours are spent cleaning up the fireworks debris left on public streets, sidewalks, parks, and school grounds? And now we have the cost of the animal control that's going to be added on to this because how many lost animals happened over the Fourth of July? The fireworks sellers don't share this burden of expense of added law enforcement, fire safety, public works, and animal control. So I say to you, before coming to the residents of the city for an increase in city sales tax, maybe the expensive issues like this can be controlled and should be looked at. I request that the council place on its agenda a discussion to limit the sales of fireworks in the city, similar to what the other 24 cities in the county have, to save the cost incurred by the increase in fireworks and the safety and the health of its residents.
Chuck Jones.
Yeah.
I know you're here, I know you're here by the card on 7A, but I have to call you up for oral now because there's no opportunity to speak later on and then Jenna.
Absolutely. First, happy birthday. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and residents. My name is Chuck Jones. I didn't come with any booklets or props or statistics. I just came with my story. I was born and raised in Garden Grove. My parents met and fell in love here, as did my mother's parents. I attended Garden Grove High, following in the footsteps of my father, his siblings, and my grandfather. My brother and sister, along with my nieces, all attended Garden Grove High. My mother and her siblings rancho, but will forgive them. My grandfather ran the projector at the Gem Theater when he was just 16 years old. His family also provided water to most of the residents in the early 1900s. In 1915, they sold their water rights and the system to the city of Garden Grove for $6,500. Needless to say, I'm connected to the city. But there's another way I'm connected to the city. How, you ask? I'm gay. I know many of you might be wondering what being gay in Garden Grove has to do with each other. A lot, actually. Believe it or not, this city was once the center of gay life in Orange County. From Hester to Beach Boulevard, Garden Grove Boulevard used to be dotted with bars that catered to the LGBT community. The first bar, Happy Hour, catered to the women in the gay community. It opened its doors in 1964, just west of Harbor Boulevard. This led the way for the Tiki Hut, the Mug, DOK West, Iron Spur, Private Stock, Rumor Has It, and more. The last bar serving the LGBT community opened in 1985, and that was the Frat House. This is also the, this is also the only establishment left that connects us to the long, rich history of the gay community in Garden Grove. These bars did not open without controversy. Across the country, raids and sting operations were being conducted targeting the LGBT community. These sting operations also happened regularly in Garden Grove. These raids eventually sparked what is probably the first gay rights protest in Orange County. That protest took place in the early '70s, steps from where we are right now, on the steps of Old City Hall. Also, did you know that the Crystal Cathedral was designed by an openly gay architect? I came out in February of 1999. This wasn't easy. Throughout my childhood, I was called faggot more than I care to remember. But growing up, I remember passing these bars and thinking to myself, "I'm not alone. There are more people out there just like me." Also, in 1991, there's a gay protest, gay rights protest down Garden Grove Boulevard. I grew up on Garden Grove Boulevard. My father was a painter and he took one of his painting tarps and he was talking to one of his friends and debating on what to write on the tarp. One of the things he mentioned was "Faggots Go Home." His plans were to write that on the tarp and roll it off the liquor store across the street from our house. Luckily, it never happened. I share all this with you because of what you're considering today. By proclaiming June as LGBT Pride Month, you are telling me that the city that I love so much, my home, sees me. It also lets that little boy that was so afraid to come out almost 20 years ago, that he's not alone, that he too is welcome here. I'd also like to urge you to take this proclamation a step further and also recognize specifically the contributions and the history of the LGBT community in this city. I'm gonna go off script here for a little bit. You know, one of the things I love most when I talk about this city is the diversity. You know, I grew up going to Crosby, Ralston, and then Garden Grove. And when I went to school, it was 30% Hispanic, 30% Asian, 30% white. You know, I had, I brought a pride flag with me and it's a rainbow flag, but as I look around this room, like, it's full of beautiful color. And that's one of the things I love about this city. And we have the opportunity, you as a council, to take that proclamation and make up for past transgressions. And not that those transgressions were specifically to Garden Grove. It's just the time. But we have that chance to say yes. Everybody's welcome here. So thank you for your time.
And that concludes oral communications. I'll just note, I do have one other card from Doug Nichols, but I'm gonna bring you, I'm gonna bring you up at the item 3A. So, in fact, that moves us on to written communications. Anybody need a break or should we keep going? Birthday girl?
It could be delicious, right?
You ready for some cake? Do you want to pause and do that right now?
No, we can keep going.
Do you have anybody here?
No.
Family?
No, no, no. Please, go outside.
Okay. Okay. We'll go on. We'll go on to item 3A.
Item 3A is for the city council to consider an appeal of a denial for a fireworks stand permit. And Ms. Hoffman is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Before you as a consideration for an appeal of a denial of a fireworks stand permit, fireworks stand permit applications are reviewed to determine if the applicants are eligible organizations. Per Garden Grove Municipal Code Section 5.28.O2OB, only federally certified, nonprofit, tax-exempt organizations located within the city limits and primarily benefiting the Garden Grove community are eligible to receive temporary fireworks stand permits. Applicants for temporary fireworks stands shall provide to the city documentation that establishes to the reasonable satisfaction of the city compliance with these requirements. On May 21st, the city of Garden Grove received a fireworks stand permit application from CDA Slammers FC. Upon review of the required documents, the city initially noted that their 501(c)(3) charitable organization determination letter issued by the Internal Revenue Service displays a Cerritos, California address. A confirmation search on the IRS's website also displays the organization as having a Cerritos, California address. The organization does not have a physical headquarters or location in Garden Grove. They were determined to not be located within the city limits, one of the eligibility requirements. Additional research and review of CDA Slammers FC's website does not display Garden Grove as one of the cities they service with organized teams. The cities listed on their website are Cerritos, Diamond Bar, Frolickton, Huntington Beach, Orange, South Bay, and Whittier. The organization does not provide a Garden Grove-based program. Further research indicates that the specific applicant, Isaac Santos, is one of the 27 coaches for the Huntington Beach program. He does reside in Garden Grove. A list of fields on their website for all the other cities they service, including the Huntington Beach teams, does not show a Garden Grove field. An additional part of a fireworks stand permit application requires an applicant to state how the organization primarily benefits the Garden Grove community. The organization stated, quote, "There are multiple families that live in the Garden Grove area and most of them are not able to afford to travel outside the United States. This will give a player the opportunity of a lifetime," end quote. This statement does not show evidence of their organization primarily benefiting the Garden Grove community. The fireworks stand permit application also requires the applicant to list three methods of how funds raised by the retail sales of fireworks will be used. They listed, one, airfare outside the US for 18 players and two coaches. Two, hotel accommodations outside the US for 18 players and two coaches. Three, travel expenses. The three methods they listed do not show that their intent is to put the funds raised back into the program by using them for items that primarily benefit the Garden Grove community, such as uniforms, equipment, and supplies. Additional information provided on their appeal hearing request form states how CDA Slammers FC, quote, "represents multiple cities in Orange County," end quote. It goes on to state, players and families are from all over Orange County and that they have over 100-plus boys and girls teams. While 12 of the 19 players for one of the 100 teams reside in Garden Grove, this does not qualify CDA Slammers FC to be an eligible Garden Grove-based organization that primarily benefits the Garden Grove community. Based on the fact that CDA Slammers FC is not located in Garden Grove, they do not run a team based in Garden Grove, Garden Grove is not listed as one of the cities they service with organized teams, and the stated use for the funds they could raise would not go back into primarily benefiting the Garden Grove community, it was determined they did not meet the eligibility requirements as per Garden Grove Municipal Code Section 5.28.O2OB. Therefore, it is recommended that city council deny CDA Slammers FC's appeal for a fireworks stand permit. This concludes my report. The staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. I'm gonna let Doug come up and speak in a minute, but any questions for staff about the report prior? Okay. Doug Nichols, all you.
Hi, my name's Doug Nichols. Good evening. I'll start real quick by just addressing a couple of the points brought on that. So the Cerritos address is just, is even really just, so here's how it started. The club started in Cerritos years and years ago, 20 years ago. And over the time, this organization has absorbed and mixed with other organizations. And the organizations and other teams they've mixed with were located in the cities that are also listed. To my knowledge, there isn't a real, I don't know that there is a Garden Grove soccer team that is eligible to combine with. Now, so what that means is the Garden Grove players are playing on the Huntington Beach teams and the Westminster teams and the Cerritos teams. So Isaac is, I'm a co-coach with Isaac. He lives in District 1. And, you know, 12 of 19 players from Garden Grove on one team is a significant Garden Grove representation for that team. So I don't want it to, I don't want to give the impression that, one, we're, we were applying for this because our city doesn't have it. Because Cerritos, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't think there's a single player on any of the three teams that are in from Cerritos. That's just sort of like the PO box of the general organization. The kids that are represented on this team, and these teams are basically Westminster, Northern Huntington Beach, Garden Grove, there's one or two Buena Park kids, one or two Fountain Valley kids. And there's three teams represented here. And it's true, one team is trying to, as a last sort of thing, raise money after spending all these years, sort of, you know, playing soccer and, you know, doing after-school youth sports and being together and being, you know, playing on Saturdays and Sundays and, you know, trying to get their, keep their grades and stay out of trouble. They are trying to raise some money so that they could sort of have a sort of representation that, you know, to reward. Now, I'm noting that there, we're not asking the city for any money to pay for any of that. We understand that. The, a lot of these kids on this team are not rich. And this would not be an opportunity without fundraising. And this is a fundraising opportunity for these children. The other, the other teams are younger teams. They're, they're young. They're, you know, 11, 10, 11, 12 years old. You know, some of the money for those parents that are working those things is gonna go to the expenses. It's gonna go towards uniforms and equipment. And the same with the older kids, too. But, I mean, I don't want it to look like we're paying for these kids to go do this and this is why we want them. I mean, that's just a small, tiny, small part of it. And Cerritos, like I said, has absolutely zero real representation. I probably can, I think Isaac actually has a 501(c)(3) number for his Garden Grove-based teams. And I could probably get that. But I think that we were going with just the general because we're trying to represent the general club, which does represent thousands of kids from the, you know, west Orange County area, including Garden Grove. So that's kind of, oh, and as far as representation in Garden Grove, Garden Park, for instance, is one of our primary fields. We have a permit there. In fact, I have a permit. I don't know if that was provided. I mean, maybe someone could pass it around, but... maybe someone could pass it around, but we have a permit from Garden Park for this year, we use it all the time, we have two tournaments, we use that twice a year, two or three days a year, we bring in teams from all, I mean, by we, the club, not, we bring in teams from all over Southern California, and they get exposed to Garden Grove, and they come here, and they eat here, and some of them stay here, and so there is a representation within Garden Grove, and we have kids that go to Pacifica High School, we, you know, we have a large Garden Grove representation. As far as our, how this got started, we were working with Rich from TNT, and he did a vetting process through us, and vetted us for the 501(c)(3), and what, you know, we were looking at, and he determined that we were the best qualified candidate for this position. He's represented other soccer teams and other club teams that don't necessarily, like I said, aren't representative 100% of Garden Grove, have had stands in the past, he's represented them. And from my understanding, that this stand will just be unrepresented altogether without us, and, I mean, if that's a decision the city wants to make, that's fine, I understand that. But I just wanted to point out a little bit more, we're not really, like I said, we're not asking the city to hand out money, we're trying to provide safe and sane fireworks, and I understand, I heard the gentleman before me, that there is an argument to whether or not we should be promoting safe and sane or not. But currently, the city does provide that, and we're trying to, you know, focus on that, we're trying to get parents to be able to work, work off some money to pay for expenses, 'cause it's, well, sport isn't cheap, but it is a good distraction at a time when kids, I think, need a distraction. Do you want me to finish up, or?
Yes, please. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So, here's why I'm at, so, we're just looking for a chance to provide an opportunity for the city, you know, to get some exposure, and some, maybe some tax dollars, and for some of our families to be able to raise some money, so that they can help support their kids' activities. If you have any questions, I'm-
Thank you. Any, any questions, Doug?
Okay, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks. Council members' comments?
I find this a little muddled, it's kinda hard to wade through it all, it's a lot of information from both sides.
Yeah.
I, just to throw it out there, I would probably stick with staff recommendation at this point.
Yeah, I just wanna say, and I've got, I've got a couple kids in club soccer that went through AYSO here in West Garden Grove, and then played NHB, and now Strikers, and so I get the whole system of how it works. I appreciate that you guys have a representation of kids from Garden Grove, and I guess I'd say, I would, I would like to be involved, participate, try and help in any way to do some kind of fundraiser, to help the team be able to travel and do their thing. I don't think this is the appropriate mechanism, just because, and I don't know how it is this year, exactly how many we have, or how many applications we have, but typically, like, true, genuine Garden Grove-based nonprofits, we have more interest than we have possible fire booth permits for. And so, the more booths we have, I mean, this has gone back and forth over the years, but it's been narrowed down in terms of number of booths, to try and help the Garden Grove nonprofits that get it be able to make money and be competitive with it, so, I mean, you know, if anything, there's an argument that we still have too many booths, and that less booths would be better for the true Garden Grove nonprofits. So, I don't know what to say, but I, I think, just from a technical standpoint, I don't think it fits the criteria of being a Garden Grove-based nonprofit that is ingrained in the community and gives back directly to the community, it's a portion of, or some of the players from, do it, and that's, that's that. It's not that I'm not empathetic, and, like I said, maybe we could help you set up a restaurant fundraiser where everybody goes and they donate proceeds, or whatever, do, you know, something like that, I know we've helped do, do those kind of things in the past, but... Any other questions, comments?
My comment would be, I think it's a very, very loose connection to the City of Garden Grove, and if they would work towards being more of a Garden Grove-based, I could be more supportive of it. I understand, I commend you for your work, and, and the activities that you mentioned, and it's worthwhile, sports in any fashion, but the purpose of this is to support nonprofits primarily for Garden Grove, so, if you work towards that direction, I'd be more supportive of supporting this in the future, but is it, as I understand it, too, it's a competitive process, there's probably more longstanding nonprofits, so with that in mind, I think I'd have to go with the staff recommendation at this point.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll move in. Recommendation.
Second.
Okay. I just wanted to say real quick that, yeah, maybe in the future, there's potential there, or something, some other mechanism, but I really appreciate your demeanor coming up and explaining your situation to us, I really appreciate that. Call the vote? Different.
Can we clarify the yes and no with, did you get, yes is for denial, correct?
Yes. My motion was for the recommendation, which was- Staff recommendation denial.
Motion received, seven yes votes to deny the permit.
Okay, item 3B, farmers market.
Item 3, item 3B is a progress report on the Garden Grove Farmers Market on Main Street for consideration of waive fees associated with the weekly farmers market. This is continued from the March 13th, 2018 meeting, and Ms. Palio and Ms. Ostendorf are here.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. At the City Council meeting held on Tuesday, March 13th, staff received direction to extend the annual permit for the weekly farmers market on Main Street for a period of 90 additional days, and to have the Director, Lee Ostendorf, return back to City Council with an update on events implemented during that extended period of time. In addition to the requested update, Ms. Ostendorf also provided a list of proposed events for future months during this calendar year. Ms. Ostendorf is here this evening to share a PowerPoint presentation and answer any questions City Council may have. I will now turn it over to Ms. Ostendorf.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Happy birthday, Stephanie.
Are you ready?
Yeah. What's working? It's working. Janet was gonna be my... Okay, the first, first slide here shows just some of the farmers, and, and we have added, well, two seasonal farmers have returned, and two new farmers have been added. The one farmer I wanna point out in particular is our rock star at the market. She's in the left-hand corner, also right-hand corner, and I think in the middle. They are the Asian farmers, she and her husband, and they just, I mean, our attendance doubles, triples when they come. They wait for, the customers wait for the truck to pull up, and, and wait, hardly wait for them to set up, and just wanna get, get their veggies. The next one shows just the fact we have eggs, we have olive oil, we have honey, avocados, you know, all sorts of vegetables, citrus. Then this is some of our crafters that are in here, too. Let's see, where's the one I wanted to point out? I think she's on another slide. Up in the left-hand corner is one of our banners on the poles. We're, along with the car show and other events that come, we share the light posts with banners. So, we're having new ones made for that, and also new ones for the arch, a large banner for the arch. And this is a couple of our farmers that do plants. Of course, everyone that has anything live grows what they sell, and have a certificate from State of California. This fellow here also has roasted, fresh roasted peanuts that he roasts on-site. Hummus, and there's the honey lady, and we have a fellow who makes soy candles. And then here's some of our crafters. The one lady in the lower left on the right, I'm, lower right, she brings her sewing machine and actually sews baby bibs, dresses, bags, all sorts of things that she sews right at the market. And also, her mother, who is 87, makes the little dresses that are up there. The fellow with, we have a Tibetan lady who sells different handicrafts from Tibet, and also makes jewelry. Fellow next to her, his brother is the designer of the jewelry that comes, he designs it and makes it. This lady's very special, she, she makes clay flowers, and she makes tiny little earrings all the way up to very large plants. And every week, she teaches people for no charge, and they just sit there and make these flowers together, and it's really well-received, and just very, very sweet lady, Nancy. Okay, so I've spoken to, and actually have a contract with Paul Washington, who's the new car show, Friday night car show operator, and we have agreed to have every second Sunday be, include cars in the, up from the Garden Grove, from Garden Grove to the first walkway, or further, we can tighten up if he needs, has more cars. Ollie George will be coming on June 24th, she's a incredible professional chef, she's Italian, and has a lot of personality, and is always well-received. Kids in canvases is kind of a paint party for kids, teaching kids how to paint, and they do a lot of birthday parties and that sort of thing. And then kind of a family fun day, pony rides, petting zoo, kids band, of course, approval by the city for that. Let's see, what else do we have? A Halloween celebration on October 28th, hoping to partner with a nonprofit on that, with lots of great decorations, and would like to host a, an event there. And then we're also working on, on other events for November and December, depending on other events that are planned for Main Street. The, the Garden Grove Downtown Business Association has been incredible. They, we have a meeting this Thursday, so we're gonna be talking about more plans and more things to do. Right now, we have, we had 21 participants when we first, 90 days ago. Today, we have 25, and we will have 28 with three new food vendors, starting on July 8th, with that first car show. Also upgrading our website, more social media. Janet was looking into some of the city lighted signs and things that could help promote the market, work together as a, as a team. We did have a Pokemon Fest on Sunday, April 15th, which was extremely well-attended, but not a good day for the businesses or for the, or for the, for the market. So, that we won't, we will not be repeating that one again. We also hosted the Jailhouse Rockers, which is an Elvis fan club. On June 3rd, Donovan Chavez was the Elvis impersonator. And I think that's all for that, let's see if we have more pictures. This just shows some of the cars, and there's Ollie's Kitchen. I think that's the end of the presentation. Any questions?
Are we gonna get the word out to get people to actually show up to these events? Are you dealing with social media and groups?
Right. I think we have to do a little of everything, and I'm hoping that with the city, the downtown association, the website, social media, I mean, we have to do it all. New, the new banner. The old banner that was there for a long time, I think it, because it didn't come down very often, it kinda blended, people didn't know, you know, something new goes up and they notice, and something that was there a long time, they don't pay so much attention, but, so I think the new banner will help a lot, too.
If I may? I think, you know, I think that this shows that there's obviously some dedication, and that you're looking for new ways to draw people to the street, bring in different vendors. I appreciated you reaching out to me about a week or so ago, to kinda discuss some of that with me, and obviously, social media and marketing and branding, the farmers market is key, and I think that as we move forward with this, and just get more people to the street, word of mouth is obviously still very much at play in terms of getting people to come to the street and enjoy the market, and hopefully, yeah, we can work with the city staff to continue to drive home that this market is on Sundays, and to come down and enjoy it. So, I, I would very much like to give you the opportunity to try and, and make some of these new improvements, and see if they work, and see how they go for the street, and just for the farmers market in general. I think it's great to have a farmers market on Main Street, and I think some of these additions are, are great, and I really appreciate your hard work to bring something forward to us that really shows us in picture what you're, what you're doing and what you hope to accomplish, so I appreciate that, and thank you.
Thank you.
This is in my district, and it is in, in my interest to see that it is successful. I thank you for being resilient to, you know, advocate and continue to make this become a success. But I, as much as I want it to be successful, I really want you to try to get as much resource as you can, in order to help you and your organization become successful. I think the staff should look as in all the means to complement your, your, your resources to trying to get the word out. When I look at the result from past years' operations, the thing that, that I do not see is a lot of people coming to, to the farmer market. Having good tenants, good people to, you know, sell stuff and, and good food is one thing. You need to, to have it in such a way that it draws the crowd, otherwise, you know, the vendor who come and participate will not much as much money. And, and so I would like to ask you to focus on that. The banner may help, may not help, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we're just trying to do it all.
But I, I think you mentioned that you try social media, but if, if, if the vendor product and food is good, and the programming is good, let, I don't know, not know whether we can put a flyer in a water bill to showcase your program, it doesn't seem to cost us anything if there's only, if there's only one more page in the water bills. So, let's try that, and, and let's, let's give them some help, if, if that is permissible under law. But I, I want to help you to, to be successful, and I want to give you the opportunity to, to explore that. So, I would be in favor to support this.
I appreciate that. In Buena Park, they put an ad in the water bill, and it worked very well.
All right. Okay, so, let's try that, but thank you for being resilient.
Thank you.
And try to, and hopefully you will be more successful in the future.
We're planning on it.
Councilor Klauff, at this time, would you care to make a motion?
I will make a motion to waive the fees associated with the weekly farmers market.
Second.
And also to, I think we also need a direct staff to renew the annual permit?
That is correct.
Second.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you second?
Yeah, and staff will look into the possibility of insert some literature in our water monthly bill, right?
We are gonna look into all the options for Ms. Ostendorf to be able to market the farmers market on all of our, not only social media sites, but look at the option for City Works and other publications that we have, so.
Okay, so, I make the second motion.
Call the vote.
I just need one more.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Best wishes going forward. Okay, we're gonna take a quick break, and we're actually gonna go enjoy some cake at this time, for Councilor Klauff.
And could I have a comment before we take the break?
Please.
I have a very critical issue that I have to attend, a family issue. So, you know, I would like to ask the mayor, my colleague, to, to accuse me. I will have to leave now and, and will not come back for today, I mean, tonight. I look at the agenda, I'm sure, you know, my colleagues can, can take care of it.
Okay, best wishes to you. Please join us in the other room for some cake.
Okay, Member Beard.
Here.
Member O'Neil.
Here.
Member Tuha Wen.
Here.
Member Klaffenstein.
Here.
Member Kim Wen.
Here.
Vice Chair Buys Apson. And Chair Jones.
Here. We already did oral communications simultaneously with City Council, so we'll go on to consent. We just have one item, which is receiving file of the minutes for May 8th. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Public hearing 3A.
Item 3A is an adoption of a resolution authorizing the sale of real property to the Orange County Transit District consisting of successor parcel numbers 1 through 309145, 13311143, and 13312302. This is continued from the May 8th, 2018 meeting, and Mr. Blatchett is here to give the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the successor agency. Tonight, we have consideration of a resolution authorizing the sale of these properties to OCTD. I have a quick PowerPoint presentation showing where the properties are located. So, the properties located in red on the slide were acquired by the former agency, and these were, now have to be sold under redevelopment dissolution, AB 26X. The property is between Chapman Avenue and Brookhurst, and OCTD has made us an offer. We actually went out and had the property appraised with our independent appraiser, Lit Garden Associates. That came back at $1.5 million, which is the fair market value of the property. The property is very limited in its use, in future uses, due to the, it being a transit district property, only used for transit. No buildings can be built on it. And in talking to OCTD, TD, they would allow for us to use...
OCTA?
Yes, OCTD is the actual agreement.
OCTD is the, it's a district part of the OCTA authority, which is a joint powers of multiple districts.
Got it.
They will allow for future temporary license agreements for use of the property. The salient points to this agreement include an all cash price of $1.5 million. escrow will open five days after the approval date, and closing within 90 days. And just a real quick refresher on how the property, the $1.5 million will be split up. Garden Grove will receive, the general fund will receive 11%, which is $165,000. The Sand District will receive 2% or $30,000, for a total of $195,000. And the other taxing entities of the county will receive 87% of the money, or 1.3 million, for a total of 1.5. So, at this time, it's recommended successor agency adopt the attached resolution, and authorize successor agency executive director to execute the agreement, and the secretary to attest to the PSA with minor modifications, if any, complete on behalf of the successor agency. And this concludes my presentation.
Can you go back to the area, the slide? Is there, is there a provision here somewhere where they're going to grant us some easement or some section on it for bike path and pedestrian path, correct?
Yes, I've had discussions with them, and they've agreed to, once we close escrow, to enter into a license agreement for the bike path.
Got it, okay, cool. That was my original concept in bringing this forward about two-plus years ago, and it's taken a long time to get through all the formalities, and I know it's just not kind of a primary item for OCTA, whatever, but glad to see this moving forward. Can't wait to see it get improved with a bike path, and even other ways that we can help OCTA lease out parts of this land to neighboring commercial uses that want it for parking or landscaping or whatnot, so. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll go ahead and move it.
Second.
Before you do that, this is a public hearing.
Okay, so there's that. Let's pause and let me, in the back. Do you want to clear the vote?
Sure.
Are you just going to leave it up there? Okay, we will open a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Dale, come on up.
I'd like to say, after I was on Parks and Recreation Commission for a while, I've looked into this, and I'm happy to see that it's going to be used for a bike trail. I think that'd be very useful to connect this part, that part of Garden Grove with its development that's going in there to the downtown section part.
Yep.
So, I'm in great favor of this, thank you.
We're going to make that happen. Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any other questions, comments?
I have a comment. Just, also benefit is they're going to maintain the property too, correct? It goes from us to them for maintenance?
That's correct.
Maintenance property? Okay, good. I want to bring that forward.
Okay, so I'll restate my motion to support the sale. Call to vote.
Okay. Motion received, six yes votes.
Any matters? From anyone?
One item related to this, maybe staff could, in their talks with OCTA, TA, and TD, any of the other open areas that aren't made into a bike path on the easement throughout Garden Grove, I'd like to make sure that we do whatever we can to fence those areas off and lock them, so that we don't have problems in those areas. There's a couple small areas that we, that aren't fenced, and there becoming to be more nuisances to things. So, I think if we can work with OCTA and OCTD on getting those secured, I think it would help everybody out.
Councilman, if I could just add on to that too, I know we've had a couple comments over the months about some particular areas right behind where the Garden Grove Women Civic Club is, and in that area too, so we'll chat with them about that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I was going to comment is, I believe this is the last meeting, well, no, we'll have more meetings of the successor agency, but our oversight committee at the city level is getting dissolved and rolling up to the county level, right? After this, so, so going forward, in the bigger picture process of the unwinding of redevelopment agencies, the county will have an oversight board, and then items will come down to us as successor agency. And I will actually serve on that board, apparently. So, okay, any other? Okay, we'll adjourn back to City Council. Taking us to consent items, it's recommended that items 4A through 4P get acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Any pulls?
I think I had a couple pulls, sorry. Yeah, I can pull 4K and 4M.
Okay, would you like to move the balance?
Yes, I'd like to move now.
Second.
Second.
Wait, whoa, whoa.
Motion second for everything except for K and M.
Okay, who made the motion?
Steph.
And who was the second?
Birthday cromatian motion. Call to vote.
Motion receiv... One more. Motion received, six yes votes.
Okay, 4K.
4K was authorized issuance of a purchase order to National Auto Fleet Group for two public works utility trucks. It was just a question on what are the guidelines for placement, just so that I'm aware, what trucks need to be or not be to allow for, for just to...
In general, it's, has to do with about six years of age and 100,000 miles of use. Currently, we're working on instituting a computer program which will take into repair schedule, and that'll help assist us as well.
And when did you say that computer program might come online, or it hasn't?
Yeah, we're working on it, and should have it up, I hope by the end of summer.
Okay. That was the only question I had, thank you, appreciate it. I'll go ahead and make a motion for 4K.
Second. Call to vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
4M.
All right, 4M, approval of Amendment 4 to the agreement with Cabco Yellow Inc. for the senior mobility program. Again, it was the same type of questions, basically, I just had a few questions on ridership. How many are using this mode of transportation, and any information in that regard?
The amount of riders, Councilmember Klaffenstein, I'm going to have to refer to some staff and go back and get some detail on that. I'd be more than happy to get you some information on that and...
Yeah, that'd be great. I'm just, just curious to see how this works, and again, ridership for this program and so forth, just for my own personal curiosity.
Okay.
Thank you. So, since I'm waiting for information on that, should I go ahead and move this then, or should I, because he's...
Up to you. Oh, I mean, is he working on that right this second, or did he, did you mean like, get back to it later?
Can you give us a little extra background on past?
Yeah.
How it performs and...
Right, right. So, I mean, I could, some of the past information is, it is, it's grant funded, but it is, a lot of the seniors who need, they work through our senior center department, and then they get, they get in, kind of assigned to the program. They then contact the senior department, the senior services department, and then they, they use them for specific things like doctor's appointments, rides to the senior center, going to different grocery stores, anything, anything that is within the Garden Grove limits, they use, they come through our program, and they use it at a minimal cost.
And it says that OCTA grant, there is grant funding, but then we match it, is that correct? And we have that budgeted within...
The match is for city staff time.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, there's no cash from this, from the general fund, it's just basically the staff that manages the program.
Okay. I think I would go ahead and approve this, but I still would like to see some numbers of possible just ridership and so forth.
Okay.
So, I'll go ahead and make a motion for 4M.
I'll second that. Motion second by O'Neil. Call to vote.
All right.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Okay, that takes us on to public hearings, we do have three, so item 5A.
Item 5A is an adoption of resolutions for the annual levy of fiscal year 2018-19 assessments for Garden Grove Street Lighting District, Garden Grove Street Lighting District number 991, and Garden Grove Park Maintenance District. And Ms. Neal is here to give the staff report.
Thank you, Mrs. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, the City Council is asked to hold public hearings for the City's street lighting and park maintenance districts, and to adopt resolutions for the collection of assessments for those districts. The public hearings are required by law, and their purpose is to hear testimony on the matter of annual assessments. Once the hearings are complete, the resolutions may be adopted, and should the resolutions pass, the required information will be forwarded to the county assessor for collection of the assessments. The assessments will raise approximately $1.3 million in streetlight revenue, and $700,000 in park maintenance revenue. There are no increases in the assessment rates from the last year. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. I don't know if you can answer it, maybe it's a Bill Murray question about the changing over to the lights. I know Edison changed their, upgraded their lights to LED. Have we had plans, have we been doing that? And are we in the, are we going to look into changing the lights?
For the, for Edison own, or for...
For the park districts and everything related to this matter, so the street lighting district, as well as the Garden Grove Park Maintenance District? Those are our lights we control.
So, for Edison, as you, as you said, Councilmember Edison did it, retrofitted all of their lights to LED, and then the city is now looking into the possibilities of retrofitting Edison, city-owned streetlights to LED.
Okay.
And of course, depending on the funding that we get, and we'll see how we could increase the scope, but we are looking into it.
Okay, so this, there's a potential down the road to increase, perhaps there's fee to cover that, the upgrade of lights, and in the long run, will save money on the energy use of those lights.
With Edison on lights, we are going to be saving, but it's very minimal, it's about $40,000 a year. But for the city on lights, there might be some savings, but we'll, we will estimate what the savings are. They will probably be around that, that amount too.
And just to be clear, at your last meeting, you approved the engineer's report, and that program was not part of this. So, these, what you're doing is setting a public hearing to basically continue the rates for the current programs that we have in place. So, if, if there's an interest in doing additional improvements, let us know, and then next year, when the engineer's report and the study comes out, that can be taken into account to see if the rates would have to be increased or adjusted.
Okay, I think that's working, worth looking into down the road for cost savings, but of course, the capital expense has to be balanced out with that, so, that answered my question, thank you.
Any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing item, so we'll open, is there anyone wishing to speak on 5A? Seeing none, we will close, and...
I'm going to have to report out.
Yeah.
So, at this time, Honorable Mayor and City Council members, at this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, the City Clerk's Office received a total of zero protests. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received, no protest period were received. There are 349 parcels in District 991. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, the City Clerk's Office received a total of zero protests for the city's park maintenance districts, to which there are 35,584 parcels. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest. And ditto on the Garden Grove Street Lighting District, of which there are 34,988 parcels, and as a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest on any of those districts. And ditto on the Garden Grove Street Lighting District, of which there are 34,988 parcels. And as a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest on any of those districts.
Thank you. Any member discussion? Legal counsel, do we have to take these three separately? The Street Lighting District 991, the Garden Grove Park Maintenance District, and the Garden Grove Street Lighting District, or can we do them all?
You don't have to. My recommendation is usually to do it separately, so the record is pretty clear that each one was acted separately, but if you wish to move them all together, that would be fine also.
I'll move all three of them together unless anyone cares to break them up.
Fine.
Okay.
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received six yes votes.
5B.
5B is adoption of a resolution confirming the annual levy of fiscal year 2018-19 assessment for the Downtown Assessment District.
Thank you. Tonight, we do have the final step in establishing the annual assessment for the Downtown Assessment District for fiscal year 1819. The assessment remains the same from the previous year and expenditures will remain the same. In accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the remaining action for City Council is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the assessment for the district. All information will be forwarded to the county assessor for collection of the assessments. This concludes my report and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions of staff? For any levy? Seeing none, public hearing item. Would anyone wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Do you have to do your same little?
Yeah, I do with this. Yeah. So, at this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, June 12, 2018, the City Clerk's Office received a total of zero protests. Since 5:30 PM, no additional, no protests were received. There are 30 parcels in the Downtown Assessment District. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest.
Thank you. Members?
Move to approve?
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received six yes votes.
Okay, item 5C, adoption of a resolution establishing and amending user fees for various city services.
Ms. Eifert is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, you have before you a resolution amending and establishing user fees for various city services. The master fee schedule combines city fees into one document and is periodically updated as needed. All city departments have reviewed the current fees charged, studied the cost of services being provided, and identified fees that should be added or considered for adjustment. The proposed changes are needed to offset new or increased costs to the city or to provide clarification regarding this description of the fee. This update includes adjustments to community services facility rental fees, fire permit fees, police vehicle release fees, Community and Economic Development Department fees, public works meter fees, and construction and demolition deposits. A public hearing is required for the establishment and amendment of these fees. If approved, the new fees will become effective 60 days after the adoption of this resolution. It is estimated that the proposed fee updates will recover approximately $110,000 annually, depending on the level of services provided. It is recommended that the City Council conduct the public hearing and adopt the attached resolution establishing and amending user fees for various city services. Staff is available for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on 5C? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council members, what's your pleasure?
Well, I just want to make a comment here. I think we've done a thorough job of justifying. If you look in the back of this report, it's thoroughly clear that we have the justifications for the increases. It's not that substantial. I think it fits in. It's not a sticker shock for a lot of people. I know some councilmembers in the past have had concerns about raising the cost to recover, raising fees to recover costs. So, with that, I think it's well documented and I want to support it. Is it appropriate? May I make a motion to?
Please.
I'll do so. A motion to approve the fee schedule.
And I'll second it and make a comment that most of these fees were still, we're trying to get to a point where we're not subsidizing them, so we're not overcharging people. We're trying to cover the costs, so that's okay. So, that was a second.
Call to vote.
Motion received six yes votes.
Okay, moving on to items for consideration, we have a handful. 6A.
Item 6A is an introduction and first reading to consider adoption of an ordinance for the paramedic tax override rate for fiscal year 2018-19. The ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Establishing the Amount of Money for Paramedic Services That Must Be Raised by an Advolum Tax Override in the Setting of the Tax Rate of Said Override." And Ms. Eifert is here to give the report.
In 1974, residents approved a paramedic tax override to help fund the ongoing costs for emergency paramedic services to the community. I also wanted to point out that in the original staff report, I mistakenly put that it was approved in 1978, but it was approved in 1974. The paramedic tax override has been set by the city and is levied by the County Auditor Controller's Office. In order to continue and maintain the paramedic services, it is necessary to continue to generate revenue through the use of this override tax on the taxable properties within Garden Grove. The rate is eight cents per $100 of assessed value and is unchanged from last year. It is estimated that this will generate approximately 10.7 million in fiscal year 2018 and 19 for paramedic services. It is recommended that the City Council introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance authorizing a property tax override of eight cents per $100 of assessed value for fiscal year 2018-19 paramedic program. This concludes my report and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff? Okay, these are all just items for consideration, not public hearings, so we can go forward. Second by Tuha. Call to vote.
Motion received six yes votes.
6B.
6B is approval of the Second Amendment to the Agreement with the County of Orange to provide forensic services. And Chief Elgin is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What you have before you is our ongoing service contract with the County of Orange for forensic services. I won't bore you with reading it word for word. I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Motion?
One comment first. Full disclosure, I work for the County of Orange. I don't work for the DA or the crime lab, so there's no conflict of interest for me to vote on this.
Okay.
Motion to approve? Second.
Just one minor technical thing on the contract. It's a typo, so we need to correct those numbers. One of page four. I think we did.
It's the typo?
Yeah, on the related to the cost. It doesn't total up to, doesn't add up. So, would you review the figures before? We sign it. On the sheriff's letter here, on the back, it has page 395. Cost of service is 162,000.
Page three, you said?
Page one of four, excuse me.
Doesn't.
Yeah, page 395 in our, I'm sorry.
Okay, and what's the number? You're saying those don't add up to 516,785?
Not in my calculations.
No, it does not.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for validating that, Chief.
I can tell you the total cost is 516,785, but we'll work on that.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, it was a motion.
We have a motion and a second?
Who was the second?
Tuha.
Call to vote.
Okay. Motion received six yes votes.
Thanks, Chief. 6C.
Item 6C is a vacation of general easements for public utility purposes for a portion of the property located at 11235 Bowles Avenue in Garden Grove. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to approve a resolution that will establish a public hearing date for the purposes of vacating a public utility easement located at 11235 Bowles Avenue. The easements are shown on page two of the lot line exhibit attached to your City Council report. As you can see, the easements run diagonally across the lot, which precludes the development of the property until those easements are vacated. The easements are for utility purposes. However, there are no utilities currently in that easement. The owner of the property has requested this action. As of to date, their efforts to vacate those easements have failed. Should council adopt this resolution tonight, a public hearing will be held on July 10 and all interested parties will be invited. So, that'll be the utility companies as well as the owner. After the public hearing, council may choose to adopt a resolution ordering the vacation of the easements. This concludes staff's report and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thanks. Any questions? Okay, I just want to say thank you guys for expediting this along. This was a complicated one. There was a property and we have a property owner who's trying to do an ADU unit on this property, but there was this easement that runs like smacked out through the middle of it and it's been held up over that. So, this is an expediting of that process so that we can help somebody move a project forward. So, thanks for bringing it forward and I'd like to move it.
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received six yes votes.
6D.
6D is award of contract to General Pump Company, Inc. for project number 7377 West Haven Well, number 21 redevelopment project.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayors, and members of the council. Tonight, City Council is asked to award a contract to the General Pump Company Incorporated for the redevelopment of Well 21, which is located at West Haven Park. The work will include cleaning of the well screen, refurbishing the pump motor, removal and replacement of the well pump, and other related tasks. All of this will be done at a cost just over $290,000. Council should note that this well was originally constructed in 1969 and this type of maintenance work is fairly normal. Staff received and opened two bids on April 25 of this year and determined that General Pump Company Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in July and should be completed by the end of summer. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with water enterprise funds. This concludes staff's report. I'm available if you have any questions.
I have one quick question. Please. Because this is at West Haven Park and we also have the new fire station construction, does this hinder that in any way? Are they far enough apart that there won't be any disruption?
They'll be far enough apart. It'll be good.
With that, I'd like to make a motion. Award of contract to General Pump Company Incorporated.
Call to vote.
Motion received six yes votes.
6E, Big Ben.
6E is award of contract to Big Ben, Inc. for project number 7401 Water Service Line Replacement Improvement Project Phase Two.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, City Council is asked to award a contract to Big Ben Incorporated for the replacement of 441 water services in the area bounded by Brookhurst to the west, Palmwood to the east, Chapman to the south, and Orangewood to the north. The area is shown on the location map attached to your staff reports. The work will include installation of 441 one-inch copper water service lines and water meters. We will have to replace sidewalks, concrete pads, and possibly drive approaches, cross gutters, and any other required work to install these water services. All this work will be done at a cost just over $1.2 million. City council should note that most of those existing water services were constructed in the 80s and 90s and they were made of a black or blue plastic material that is now worn. We're receiving, we're getting quite a few cracks and service breaks in those areas, so we decided to simply replace them all with a superior copper material. Also, the water meters themselves average about 20 years of age, so it's time for them to be replaced as well. Staff received and opened 10 bids on April 11 of this year and determined that Big Ben, Inc. was the lowest responsible bidder. Should council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in July and should be complete by the early next year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with water enterprise funds. This concludes staff's report and I'm available should you have any questions.
Questions?
Make a motion?
Go for it.
And I'll second it with a comment just for the, that affects people in District 2, so some necessary improvements come into your area, so please bear with the construction as it's going forward, but it's going to be a good thing.
Yeah.
That's a second.
Cool. Call to vote.
Motion received six yes votes.
6F.
6F is award of contract to RJ Noble Company for street rehabilitation project number 7280 Chapman Avenue, Sapphire Street, Healy Avenue, Santa Rita Avenue, and Wild Goose Street in Garden Grove.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, City Council is asked to award a contract to RJ Noble Company for the pavement rehabilitation on Chapman Avenue from Booker Street to Nelson Street, on Sapphire Street from Belgrave Avenue to Vanguard Avenue, and on Healy Avenue at Lamp lighter Street, and Santa Rita Avenue from Lamp lighter Street to Wild Goose Street, and Wild Goose Street from Chapman Avenue to Santa Rita Avenue. Please note, the work to be done will cause minor traffic delays in those areas, regardless of the efforts by staff and the contractor to minimize the impacts. The delays will be caused by the closure of traffic lanes to facilitate the construction in a safe manner. The work will include the full death reconstruction of the pavement section using a cement-treated base. The use of cement treatment on the base greatly improves the strength of the roadway. However, the material must be allowed to cure before paving, and that's about a week. So, during that week, there is the appearance that not much work is going on, but in fact, we are continuing to work. The work will also include, of course, putting paving, you know, paving on top, repair of damaged concrete sidewalk, curb and gutters, upgrading of access ramps, and installation of catch basin filters. That seemed to be an issue of concern tonight. Adjustment of utility covers to finish grade, restoring the traffic signing and striping, all pavement markers, reestablish of centerline ties and monuments. Those are survey monuments. And all of this work will be done at a cost just over $2.2 million. Staff received and opened six bids on May 30 of this year and determined that RJ Noble was the lowest responsible bidder. Should council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in July and should be complete by Halloween of this year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with Measure M2 funds, gas tax, and state tire recycling grant funds. This concludes staff's report and I'm available should you have any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, well, roughly how long will these streets be out of commission? For months at a time or?
Well, they're all three different, but we will complete each street prior to moving on to the next one. At least that's the original plan. We will entertain, the contractor will always present us with their schedule, and we will consider, you know, variations of that which will complete the project sooner. We do try to get it done as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I understand that. I just wonder like a typical, one street would take a month, two weeks?
street, it should just be a couple months. Still long enough.
Yeah, yeah, for a little street, it's still a couple months. Is any way, this may sound ridiculous, but signage related to curing or delays, rain delays, or some notification?
We do notify all of the properties, and we have a flyer that explains the process, and some of them read that and answers their questions, and we're available. We do have our project signs available.
A website or anything like that?
We prefer people to call in. We can put it in the website, but it, they send not to get there. It works better if they just call us and we can explain everything.
Yeah, we make the effort to notify them, but.
Oh, yeah.
We can be thorough about it, or anything that reaches. When you mentioned that curing, and it takes a week, as you said, people think nothing's going on with the job.
Nothing's going on.
But we're waiting for it to cure.
Yeah.
And that kind of information. But that's all listed in the flyer that you send?
That's in the flyers, and we also have our project signs out as well, and that has a phone number that can be called.
Yeah, I just think more information's better in these situations. Even with delays, just let them know what's going on.
Correct.
Thank you. Motion?
Do we have a motion already?
Yeah. Have we? We'll have one now. Move approval.
Go for it.
Second. I'll second that.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Okay, that is, that completes items for consideration. We'll move on to matters. We do have one agenda's matters, 7A, and I will let Councilmember Kim win do the honors.
So, I'll try to keep it brief. A couple of weeks ago, I traveled back to my alma mater, UC Santa Cruz, and had the privilege to show one of my best friends around my former college Oaks. And we got to walk around, and I was showing her all the different murals that we had, you know, from Frida Kahlo, you know, murals dedicated to Japanese internment, remembering the last princess of Hawaii, and some other murals regarding Black Lives Matter. And we stopped at the Harvey Milk mural, and it dawned on me Pride Month is coming up. And I wondered to myself if we had ever recognized June as Pride Month in Garden Grove, and I shot an email, and turns out, we never have, and we don't own a pride flag. So, I requested that this be added to our agenda for under matters. A speaker during oral communications, very much more eloquently than I have listed here, went through a brief history that Garden Grove has with LGBT community, and although not a great one, we have a very good opportunity now to kind of turn a new leaf and move forward. It comes down to human rights, worrying less about how to prevent others from living and enjoying and prospering in their lives, and more about our inability to adjust to change. Change is not bad. Change is not impossible. Change can be good. In the words of Harvey Milk, "It takes no compromise to give people their rights. It takes no money to respect the individual. It takes no political deal to give people freedom. It takes no survey to remove repression." And how fortunate that we have it on June 12th, because on June 12th, 2016, America witnessed the worst mass shooting in history at that time. We didn't know that even larger mass shootings would come after that. But in Miami, in Orlando, Florida, at the Pulse nightclub, which was a gay nightclub, 49 people were killed and 53 were wounded. And so, it's very fitting that we bring this today, and we proclaim, moving forward, that June 20th, 2018 be LGBT Pride Month in Garden Grove. So, I would like to motion to, hold on, do I get, help me get this right. Motion to approve the proclamation as it stands, to proclaim June LGBT Pride Month.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Kim, for bringing it forward.
Yeah, thank you, Kim.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Okay, matters will go around the horn. Mayor Pro Tem Beard.
Well, I want to wish Councilwoman Klaufenstein happy birthday.
Thank you.
And I think, oh, I want to appreciate, I want to thank Mr. Mitchell, he's gone for benching June 14th as Flag Day, and he's very eloquent in his whole topic of patriotism and that, and so that's reflective. I remind citizens, please, out of respect, put your flags out. And I wanted to bring up what a speaker had talked about, a couple of speakers of code enforcement. I'd like to agendize for a future meeting to discuss our general, what's going on with code enforcement? These, I want these items looked at particularly. These pictures are very telling, and the duration of how long it's taken, get an overview of the process involved. I know these things take some time legally, but it seems like it was extended amount of time for these, so, and I want to hopefully talk about commercial code enforcement as well. So, hopefully, at the, I don't know if we have too busy agenda for the next council meeting, so if we don't, maybe we could bring it up as a discussion item. Oh, do we need, we don't need a vote on that, too, since there's no action required, just a discussion item. Also, as a discussion item, I'd like to talk about what was brought up by another speaker that is fireworks, and more detailed information. I know the chief, Chief Schultz did an excellent job of explaining it, but that was a brief presentation. Hopefully, we could have a more in-depth information. The cost, the fines, the citations, block parties, future consideration items. I was always curious about the fine being $1,000. I know we're a general law city, so maybe one of the discussion points could be the prospect of being a charter, or having as a charter item as a city for a higher, higher fee or fine for a penalty for that. Maybe we want to include other items, graffiti and such, as a charter item for consideration, not for action, just for discussion, just to ponder and think about. I think it's, but 4th of July coming up, I think it's always good to go over this issue, and maybe even look at permits, parade, excuse me, block party permits, and fireworks going on in those areas, take a look at those. And so, that's what I would want to do, is bring up that as a discussion item, fireworks, for an agendized item. So, with that, I think we have to report in the conference we just attended. I'll leave that to the mayor. We attended a conference, shopping center conference, three of us, so I'll leave that to you. So, that's what I have. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Just a couple of things. I wanted to mention, too, Charles Mitchell always has an eloquent, something to say at every meeting, and I'm an emotional and patriotic guy, and he almost had me in tears up here with his speech tonight, so just moving, you could see the passion in him to educate the young folks that may, you know, weren't paying much attention in high school or school, but when you get older and you start appreciating these things that happen to, for your freedom, when you go to do jury service for the first time, it's probably eye-opening. So, I appreciate Charles. Strawberry Festival, we had a very successful strawberry festival. I think everybody had a great time. I'm sure it was very successful. I really appreciate the board members and the committees and all the volunteers that make that happen, and the money that's provided to all the nonprofits in Garden Grove. It's really a huge event. And the third thing, I wanted to promote the Garden Grove Women's Club on Chapman and Gilbert. They're having a fundraiser for veterans, and US Congressman Lou Coria is involved in this because he's got a heart for the veterans. Anything we can do to raise money to help disabled veterans, unemployed veterans, people coming right back out of the service. They're having, the Women's Club is having a 50 Shake, Rattle, and Roll Veterans Fundraiser Dinner Dance. So, for $45, you can buy a ticket and have a night of dinner, dancing. They're gonna have gifts, money tree, opportunity baskets. It's gonna be a good night if you have nothing, you know, going on. I'd say come out to that. I'll be there. I think Lou Coria might be there if he can be, or his representatives will definitely be there. And it, all the money goes to help veterans, and most of them, a lot of them are disabled veterans that are just looking for a place to live. So, my heart goes out to that, and I, if you want to contact me, for the first 10 people that contact me, I'll, if you buy one ticket, I'll buy the second one for you. So, let me know. You can get ahold of me anyway, online, or you can find me. And then fireworks, you know, I hate to see a few bad apples ruin fireworks for everybody in the city of Garden Grove. My family's been here 60 years. It's kind of a tradition. I haven't seen too many issues with the safe and sane fireworks. Obviously, illegal fireworks are illegal fireworks, okay? I think where a lot of the strain comes from is, and I'd like to see more policing of up before the 4th of July and after the 4th of July. So, if you're a resident, obviously, it's going off, a cannon is going off three doors down. Let the police know. See if someone can go and check it out. I think we can all tolerate, not the illegals, but we can tolerate fireworks for a couple of hours on the evening of 4th of July, but I think it's a lot of the leading up to it weeks ahead and weeks after that really gives everything a bad name for everybody. So, maybe we can look into how we can police that stuff before and after, and it's gonna take the community's help to do that. So, and that, what else did I have here? Oh, one other thing that caught my heart, and sorry, is, you know, getting into the summer season, please, if you have a pool or any body of water around your home, please protect that and keep the children away from pools. You know, everybody's seen that lately of the devastation of what can happen if a child goes in there. So, if you have a pool and you're having a party, make sure somebody's assigned to watch as a lifeguard, and then if you're not having a party, there's a lot of good technology out there for alarms. If there's any movement in the water, an alarm goes off. It's an app on your phone. I mean, it could save a life just with a simple, maybe it's a hundred dollar item, but if it saved a life, it's worth it. So, please secure your pools. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Councilmember Tuha win.
Yes. This week is the graduations for across, especially Garden Grove, University School Districts. So, I just want to congratulate all the graduates from elementary to junior high, to high school, to college, to class of 2018. And also, this weekend is Father's Day, so I would like to say, is it right? So, I would like to say Happy Father's Day to all the fathers up here, and also Happy Birthday to the Councilwoman Klaufenstein. And one more thing is I just want to say thank you to Mr. Leland for your hard work. This is like a two-minute like validation report, because I'm a scientist myself, so actually, this is very thorough, and I know that you take a lot of time to compile this, so thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Kim win.
I have a long list, so I'll try to be fast. First, I would like to ask if we can have staff come back to us at some point, doesn't have to be at the next meeting, but to give a couple of updates regarding Roxy Street between Trask and Westminster, as well as Haster and Lamson. I know that I've heard things are coming down the pike to help those streets regarding parking issues and/or speeding, accident reduction-type things, whether it be lighting, signals, but I would like for it to be reported out for the public's knowledge, because I still continually get calls from residents questioning that, and I'd rather be proactive and share the information, let them know it's coming, so that they don't continue to express anger towards those two intersection areas. And also, I've been receiving more and more complaints about an area across the street from Santiago High School. It is a Trask-Clinton area regarding a county-owned flood control area. Apparently, students and individuals are climbing the fence and going behind there and then breaking into residents' homes. I've asked a couple of questions about that, but I'd like to have more follow-up and get a staff report back out to the public as well, just quick brief, so that that community knows that their issues are being addressed. And thank you to staff for labeling every item in the packet for us to make it very easy to navigate. I know I brought that up at the last meeting, so I'm glad to see that everything was clearly marked. It's getting hot out, as mentioned earlier. Please don't leave your dogs in your car. And also, an event announcement, please join us for an outdoor movie and free activities on Wednesday, June 20th, at the Elks Lodge located at 11551 Trask Avenue. The featured movie will be Justice League. Activities will begin at 6:00 PM with family entertainment, including a bounce house, crafts, and photo opportunities with Batman and Wonder Woman. The movie begins at 8:30 PM. There will be food and drinks available for purchase. In addition, the first 300 children will receive free sunglasses, and those that participate in a trivia challenge will have a chance to win giveaway prizes. Additional event details are available on the city's website. I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Stephanie, a Happy Father's Day to all the dads out there, and an early Happy Birthday to my stepmom.
Birthday girl, Klaffenstein.
All right. Like everybody said, it's, the 14th is Flag Day, so let's see if we can just get Garden Grove full of flags that day. A couple of weeks ago, myself and the city manager, and I believe Anna Polita, we met with Vector Control. I had a meeting there today. We were going over budgets for the next fiscal year, and Rick Howard, the director, wanted to make sure that we were still on for our presentation, so I think he had that it was coming next council meeting. So, I believe that's the plan, to have Vector Control here. Yeah, he's got it in his calendar, so they're going to be coming and just giving an overview of what we can expect this summer, explaining that we are a high-risk nine city, meaning that we have a greater chance of West Nile virus and the 80s mosquito here in Garden Grove, and just kind of an overview of all of that. So, that'll be coming at the next meeting, and as Tuha mentioned, we have graduation for everyone, so congratulations to our graduates, and congratulations to my little graduate, Emerson, who is graduating from kindergarten. Friday's gonna be a big day in the Klaffenstein household. And I want to thank my friend Chuck for coming here this evening and having the courage to share his comments with us tonight. I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
City Manager Scott Stiles.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, three quick things. First of all, on the code enforcement items that were reported out, we won't wait for two weeks to report out. We'll send you an email update on the status of that, on what's going on, where it is during the next two weeks. But timely to that, I know Lisa Kim and David Dent are actually getting ready to make a full report out on some of the changes and reorganizations that they've been doing with our code enforcement program, so we will be prepared to come forward and bring you an update on some of the progress and some of the changes that are going on there. So, that will be coming soon. Two weeks from today, at the next council meeting, we'll be bringing forward the tweaks and changes, updates on the continuation budget for our two-year budget. You approved the two-year budget last July, but because, you know, with mandates and other minor changes to the budget, we'll be bringing that forward in two weeks. And then finally, our Garden Grove TV crew continues to rack up all kinds of awards. They were recently at the SCAN Natoa Awards at the Universal Hilton, covering the states of California and Nevada, and Garden Grove TV3 brought home two first-place awards and two second-place awards for the states of California and Nevada. You may remember, the two first-place awards that they received were for their productions that they did. One was our PD memorial video that they did, Fathers, Husbands, Brothers, and Friends of the Fallen Five. That was one of the first-place winners, along with their campaign that they produced for the shop in Garden Grove, Win $500 and More. That was a first-place award winner. They also won two second-place awards for their productions, talking about Garden Grove Streamlines Building and Safety, and the second one was Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Parade 2017. So, again, they continue to do great work, and compliments to them. So, that's what I add.
Good stuff. Okay. I will close tonight in memory of Chuck Stevens. Like to mention the recent passing, just days before his 100th birthday, of the oldest former Major League Baseball player and Garden Grove resident, Chuck Stevens. Born in 1918 in New Mexico, Mr. Stevens and his family moved to Long Beach in the early 1920s. During his years as first baseman for Long Beach Poly High School, he played with or against future professionals like Ted Williams, Bobby Dorr, Jackie Robinson, Vern Stephens, Bob Sturgeon, and his lifelong friend, Bob Lemon. In 1938, he signed a minor league contract with the St. Louis Browns and hit his first homerun at Yankee Stadium in 1946. In a three-season Major League career, he was a 251-average hitter with four home runs and 55 RBIs in 211 games, including 89 runs, 29 doubles, eight triples, six stolen bases, and a .333 on base average. Mr. Stevens then moved to the Pacific Coast League's Hollywood Stars, where he was their first bagger until 1954, winning three championships. In 1960, he assumed the role as Secretary of the Association of Professional Ball Players In a three-season Major League career, he was a 251-average hitter with four home runs and 55 RBIs in 211 games, including 89 runs, 29 doubles, eight triples, six stolen bases, and a .333 on base average. Mr. Stevens then moved to the Pacific Coast League's Hollywood Stars, where he was their first bagger until 1954, winning three championships. In 1960, he assumed the role as Secretary of the Association of Professional Ball Players of America, helping thousands of Major League players, umpires, scouts, and trainers for more than 38 years. Mr. Stevens is survived by his high school sweetheart and his loving wife, Maria, daughter Randall, and grandson's Nick Guerra, Josh Guerra, and Charles Steve Chamberlain. The city expresses heartfelt condolences to the family, and I'd like to ask that tonight's meeting be adjourned in his honor. With that, we are adjourned.